Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting of the Manchester Planning Board to order. I'll take a role called vote. Mary Foley.
Yeah.
Peter Morton.
Here.
Sue Philbert.
Here.
Chris Olney.
Here.
Gordon Brewster.
Yeah.
Sarah Creighton is here. And we're expecting Laura and Mark. The first order business that's just not on the agenda is correspondence. We had a couple of notices from a budding towns. And we also did have an email that I just realized didn't go to the whole board from Gary Gilbert and sort of added on to by Axel Magnussen and Chuck Weisner about the approval not required by law. So we can talk about that once we get to that part of the agenda. Any other correspondence that we had?
I don't know.
There. All right, we've got correspondence. Hi, Laura.
Hello.
While we have a number of people here, I wanted to just acknowledge that this is actually, we have two board members retiring from the board. And since Laura is actually not going to be here next meeting, we wanted to acknowledge both of them. Come on in, Mark. Tonight, and thank you both for your contributions. I'll start with our more junior member, Laura Tenney. Has served on the board since July of 2021, when she was appointed and then she ran. And before that, she was on the, she was an alternate for the ZBA from 2017 to 2018. So Laura, we want to thank you for your very thoughtful comments so often and your vast knowledge of landscape design, your advocacy for safe streets and sidewalks, pedestrian access, and higher density, and all of those issues. So we'll miss you. And please come back and see us.
I will.
Thank you. Thank you. A little tribute. Something for you.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Just a bag.
And Mary Foley will be here, I hope, next week, two weeks from now. But we also wanted to acknowledge, since we're doing this tonight, Mary's contributions. She has been on the board since 2020. And Mary, you have always been very thorough and prepared, always willing to ask tough questions and raise issues that may not always be in the majority. And that takes courage and preparation and thoroughness. And I think we all respect you for that. And you really are willing to sometimes take the, you know, stick with your convictions and raise the issues that you really feel are important. And that takes a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of courage. I think you also have brought a really careful eye to so many of our zoning changes, very thorough, and we appreciate that. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the board and to town. And we look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Or three weeks, whatever it is. After-town meeting, actually. At-town meeting and after-town meeting. So thank you, everybody, for, please join us in thanking Laura and Mary when you see them. Planning Board takes a lot of work. It's always, there's a lot, a lot behind the scenes that goes on. So thank you both. Okay, with that, we're going to jump into the approval not required for 22 Union Street. If you recall, the applicant was very gracious to give us a week or two extension on the deadline. The plan divides the lot into a small portion in the back as well as a compliant portion in the front. I think we all have the plan. We also did talk with counsel who advised us that this was, in fact, an A&R. I did a little research about how does this happen? Why would somebody want to do it? And I found an article about, it's called "The Developer's Loophole," which is, means that by dividing the land, you actually lock in the zoning use. And that may or may not be why they're doing it. I don't know. It's not our hunt. But that is one way that, one reason. I also spoke to the building inspector and asked the question that I had asked, which is now that the building is right up against the setback. Does that constitute setback violation? And he echoed what I believe the applicant's counsel said, is that the violation does not, and I think Mark said this as well, does not occur until the, one of the parcels are transferred into separate ownership, at which point there would be a violation and they would be either required to go to the ZBA or asked to remedy the violation, even though it's an existing building. So that answers that question, at least from the building's perspective, building inspector's perspective. So that's just sort of background work that we did between last meeting and this meeting. Do we not want to, do we want to hear from the applicant any new information or people have questions about the plan? Do you have anything to add? Let me just ask, do you guys, does the applicant have anything to add or any new changes since we last saw it?
There's been no changes whatsoever. And there's no intention at this time to do any demands of either property.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
So I had some concerns with the application. I believe our applications are legal documents. And on page two, our item two was taken out and a new item two was taken, was put in that we do not have as a criteria. So I think that's illegal. And if...
Okay, well, we'll try this again. Sorry about that. I have hidden the videos of everybody's pictures, at least. I don't know if that will work, hopefully. Okay, so Mary was making the point that the application was changed, which I also observed.
Yeah, so our application is changed, which I think we have to, we have to go by our application. And our application, although town council says you can create a non-buildable lot, we don't actually have that as one of our four criteria to pick as a selection. So my two concerns are changing a legal document and inserting language that we don't have on ours. And then the second is, we actually don't have criteria on our own application to say we can, they can create non-buildable lots. So I want to understand where we are in the process.
Under 4.2.3 of your own subdivision, that article talks about the fact that you can have a lot that does not fully comply with zoning, and that's as long as it's denoted as same. So it would be a non-buildable lot.
I'm just referring to our application.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to go back to your regs. So firstly, I think that your application should have a fifth, but I went with the closest category to refine the language to state what was factually correct and is allowed under both the state statute and your own bylaw. That was what I was trying to accomplish.
But you did edit our application.
100%, but your whole application has like, literally like, lines to be edited, to be filled in. So that's all that I did with respect to that section. So I could have, you know, and I should have done this then, is what I'm hearing from the board, is I could have stricken out the language and inserted my language so that it was entirely clear. It was not meant to be at all fraudulent or trying to not be transparent with the board. That was not the intent whatsoever. I think that's appreciated.
Okay. And then, Mark, can you advise regarding whether that grounds for pushing software?
Not really. I mean, you have to evaluate the plan based on what was submitted. The application fees were submitted. And I think she was trying to explain why and altered it as opposed to just adding to...
There was no other selection. I mean...
Yeah, I think, I think we would have appreciated like, a letter or something that wrote that actually...
And I did provide that in the interim. So in response to, you know, post-meeting, we had both Adam Zager and I as co-counsel had submitted additional information to the board. And it was in that. I can, I don't know if that's been shared with the entire board. That was the email on March 27th. I sent it at 9:03 to both the chairperson and to the town planner. But it was specifically talking about you, Mary.
I don't, I don't, it wasn't in our meeting packet for tonight, so I don't...
I can read it into the record if you'd like. I mean...
Okay, why don't you do that?
Oh, I thought you said you were going to do that. I apologize.
No, you can go ahead and do that.
So Ms. Creighton, on behalf of 22 Union Street LLC, I'm following up on the below email exchange with co-counsel Adam Zager of Chautauqua Stewart. We appreciate your quick attention to this matter thus far and are hoping based on the following response, the planning board will be able to administratively handle and endorse the bylaws at its next meeting. To confirm, the 22 Union Street application is indeed on the MBTS form. The language in Section 2, and only that language, was revised to simply indicate the facts that the plan shows a division into two parcels, only one of which is a buildable lot with directly a body lot. In accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 81p, an A&R endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision. For purposes of subdivision control law, a subdivision is a division of a tract of land into two or more lots. A lot is defined in 81L as an area of land in one ownership with definite boundaries used or available for use as the site of one or more buildings. Because parcel B shown on the plan will not be available for use as the site of one or more buildings, parenthetical, unless combined with lot one or another property, it is not a lot as defined in the subdivision control law. If the planning board finds that a plan of land does not require approval under the subdivision control law, Section 81 directs that it shall endorse thereon with the words "approval under the subdivision control law" not required. Goes on to talk about the, under MBTS subdivision rules and regs, Section 421, if a majority of the board or of the opinion that the plans do not show a subdivision, it shall so endorse without a public hearing. Rules, Section 4.2.3 explicitly contemplates that a lot or parcel may not comply with zoning and that the board may require that bylaw to be annotated to indicate such compliance, providing a series of examples how to do so. The bylaw we submitted for the planning board's A&R endorsement for 22 Union Street LLC specifically states in Note 1 that parcel B shall not be considered a buildable lot unless combined with a directly abiding lot. Lot A on the plan complies with frontage and front side stretch, lot area and frontage requirements. This is all that's required for an A&R endorsement under both the subdivision control law and the MBTS subdivision rules. It does not need to be proposed conveyance at the time of the A&R application as the MBTS application form seems to contemplate. Because parcel B will not be available for use as the site of one or more buildings unless combined with lot one or another property, it is not a lot as defined in the subdivision control law. If you want to talk about case law about that, if you want to hear the further...
So one, I would just appreciate that planning board members would get correspondence so we can all know what's going on. Unfortunately, a lot of board members are left in the dark a lot of times. We don't get forwarded these emails. I now understand the reason, but you can't change a legal document. And I think it also highlights what I've brought up prior, is that the applications in our subdivision document are dated and the board should be doing a full review of them. Obviously, it doesn't sync up with our own bylaws and the A&R requirements. So I think that's a project for future planning board that I know has been mentioned for years. So those were my concerns.
I think maybe we can ask Mark to look at the A&R application. Other questions for the applicant or for discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Question just on terminology, if I may. Parcel B versus lot A. Is there a reason you're calling one a parcel and one a lot? Can you explain?
It's a great question, yes. Because a lot, capital L, is deemed a buildable lot, compliant with that, whereas the parcel was purposely used to delineate it further as a non-buildable.
Okay.
Adam Zager also for the applicant. If you look in our zoning bylaw, you will see that we have a separate definition of lot, which is a land available for building, and then a parcel, which is another piece of land that's not available.
Not associated with...
So there are actually already those separate definitions.
A good lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, other discussion? I think, are there any public comment? We don't, this is not a public hearing, but if there's, if somebody has any specific comment, you raise your hand. All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to endorse the...
I'll make that motion to endorse the plan. I don't have the details of the rule, but...
You are here.
Great. Let's see. It's a plan dated March 5th, 2025, undertaken by Meridian Associates for the subdivision of land at 22 Union Street, which specifies that the parcel land will not be a buildable lot.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Peter, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for giving us the extra time. That was helpful. And we can endorse the bylaw. Do you need it tonight or...
I was going to record tomorrow, but if you want me to pick it up at town hall tomorrow, I can do that as well.
I can come back later.
That'd be great.
In fact, I'm going to make my co-counsel handle that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your patience and...
Put it to work.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item is approval not required, Form A for 9 Ashland Ave by Quay LLC. And I'm going to turn this over to Sue Philbert.
So this, we had denied this A&R. And was anything filed with the clerk on the...
No, I was unaware that you actually denied it. I thought you had continued it until tonight.
Okay.
So nothing was filed on the clerk's, but it is a plan that is entitled to endorse it, so...
Can you explain that to us?
Well, it does have frontage and access across the frontage to Ashland Ave, which is, assuming the board feels that it's suitable for another house lot, is of suitable grades in which for additional parcel, so additional lot, so...
I think one of the things, the main reason why we denied it was because the application itself did not indicate any reason that they were falling under to request the A&R. But looking at the law a little bit further, it turns out that if they have set forth that reason on the actual plan, which I think they did in the first note, it may have satisfied the requirement. You know, they were really sloppy in filing this by not throwing in any of the reasons on our actual application.
I think John Harden is here.
Yeah, John Harden, 54 School Street, but also the architect for the client. I have to say, I was not involved in the application, so I don't, I haven't even seen it, to be honest. But apologies if it wasn't adequate. I do know that the reason for the application is actually very simple. So 9 Ashland, the client had done work on the building five or six years ago, five, I think, maybe five years ago. It's a beautiful old building. It was kind of a large house, and they decided to make it a two-family. So it's a, it looks exactly the same as it always did. It's actually quite a fine historic building in town. As part of the work, they renovated the building, made it look beautiful, but added sort of an L-shaped piece at the back. They added a unit within the existing structure of the building. The lot, though, is a large lot. It's about 20,000 square feet. And so they were interested in the possibility in the future of doing something with the, with the essentially open space adjacent to the existing house.
Plan.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So you see the entirety of the footprint, or sorry, of the lot that exists, 9 Ashland...
Oops, sorry.
That screen is so touchy.
Yeah, I'm always scared to touch it. So the existing lot is that perimeter there. 9 Ashland is this footprint here that also has a cute little carriage house piece in the back. So the back piece here was made into a unit, and the front is actually quite a, quite a nice, large unit as well. So that is now a two-family. But as you can see, there's this adjacent piece of a property here, which is essentially grass and a few trees, you know. And you can see that the size of the lot that is proposed here is 6,281 square feet, which is above the 6,000 required in the general district. It has 62 feet, where 60 feet is required for frontage. And to be honest, our client hasn't decided if or what exactly to do there, but we know that they could build a single family, they could build a two-family. It's unfortunately not in the 3A, so that's probably the extent of, of the options. But it is what they're thinking of after.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a process question? So we denied, is this a new application?
It's not a new application. It was Mark's interpretation that it was continued until today.
We denied without prejudice?
Yes.
So that's not a continue?
No, I understand that. I was on that meeting. I thought it had been continued. That's why the denial was not filed. However, so it's beyond the 21 days. However, it is a plan that should be endorsed regardless. You discussed it now, so I think you basically should vote to endorse the plan. There's a small process that they would have to go through if you don't vote to endorse the plan, but eventually, because it's beyond 21 days, it would be endorsed.
It wouldn't be endorsed if we denied it.
Well, if, and if that, so that needs to get, a denial needs to get filed with the town clerk within 21 days.
Okay, but...
That didn't happen.
Okay, so, so the planning board made a decision and then nobody filed it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And now, is this a new application, but the town board...
You're just reconsidering the previous plan. You don't have to reconsider it, but I would recommend that you reconsider it. You know, the applicant can request, I don't remember exactly what the process is because it kind of had it done, but the applicant can request, just I believe it was something with the town clerk, to say that the decision wasn't filed within timely manner, and then it can, I'm not sure whether the town clerk endorses it, but eventually it gets endorsed and the applicant can report. So I'm just recommending that the board reconsider it tonight. And if you feel it's, you made an error in deciding not to endorse it at the last meeting, that you vote to endorse it now. And...
I have a comment. I think one of the reasons we didn't really endorse it was no one was here representing the applicant, which made it kind of difficult to know what was going on. But given this new situation and knowing now what's happening, I think it's a reasonable idea, and I'd like to move that the plan would reconsider its decision not to endorse.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I have a point, too. You may mention it. I think that's why we didn't talk about it, because there's nothing on here asking us to do anything.
Exactly, and there was no one here.
No one here, but the form still is the same. I would have thought they would have updated it by now.
Right.
So which one is it?
But under the notes, it does indicate the purpose.
You're talking about that note on the right side of the...
Right. And apparently, although we like to have our application filled out, as long as they have stated it on the plan itself, which was properly filed.
Could we make, I don't disagree with you. Could we make it contingent that the form is updated and filed appropriately?
That's a great idea. John shaking his head yes.
And I think just for complicity, this is the, even though the owners have done a lot of work in town, this is the first time they've ever engaged in an A&R to buy a property like this. I think probably the approval not required may have been a misnomer, that they thought, oh, I can just have this done and submit it, and it's, you know...
Right.
It's done. And I was never asked about it, I'm afraid. And I didn't even know that this was before you in the last meeting, otherwise I would have definitely been here to talk about it. So I apologize for that and to the lack of clarity in the application. If we can amend that and submit it, be more than happy to do that.
Who's reviewing applications now?
I think if we can talk about process after we, it's a valid question, but let's talk about the process after we deal with this specific one. What, how we're going to address this. Any other discussion from the board on...
I have questions on the actual thing, but I don't know if we've decided yet.
I think we have to vote on your motion to reconsider. So any other discussion about...
Are you going to revise it, though, to include wins?
I think that happens at the...
Any other discussion about reconsidering? Okay, all in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Okay. All right, okay. Now, any other discussion about the merits of the application itself? Mary?
Question. Lot X. So if you go to Salem deeds, it says something such as it's, somebody paid a doll, so Manchester Marine paid a dollar to the owner of lot, the original lot...
Yes.
For a construction and maintenance easement, excavation, fill, construct, blah, blah, So it looks like Lot X was created as a lot. When and how was that created? Because it never came from the planning board. And so if Manchester Marine owns it, how is this property using it in an A&R?
So I can answer that just before the meeting, because your question, I had looked up at the registry in that Lot X was created and endorsed by the planning board and recorded at the registry in 2014. And it's a separate lot, obviously an unbuildable parcel, that said it was to be conveyed to the, to the house in the easement, it's just for access to that strip, which is shown. I have a little blow up with that. Do you want to pass a few of these around?
Do you have the Salem deeds? Because my Salem deeds is 2021.
Well, that's when the deed was, but the plan was recorded in 2014.
I have that one, so, oh wait, Mary needs one. So who owns the lot? Do you have the Salem deeds?
The lease deed from 2021. The lease deed from 2021.
So the planning board did it in 2014?
It was recorded in 2014. I think it was endorsed 13, November of 13.
So, but in A and R, you don't pay a dollar? You don't pay some?
For the conveyance.
What's that?
In order to have a contract, you have to receive something, give something. So typically, it's a nominal conveyance. They put a dollar down.
Okay, and then the, this, this lot then paid Manchester Marine back?
No, they conveyed a property. So maybe.
There is a, there is a hand up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's a hand.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to take it, it's relevant.
It might be the client.
Yeah.
Sure. Did someone want to address the board?
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is Edward John Flamian, the owner of Nine Ashland Avenue. I don't know if you're discussing, I was trying to follow, I don't know if you're still, the subject is still in open, Nine Ashland?
No.
The question, I think someone raised a question on the, or may I address that, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we purchased the house a few years back and we did a historical upgrade there. We brought it back to the original 1847. I think Mary Foley, if I'm correct, she's asking a question. There was, when we purchased the house, there was a situation with the deed, a slice of land, probably, I don't know the exact measurements, but I'd say probably four feet wide, and it went down to a triangle. And that was what the previous owner had to clear up the deed. And that's what she's, I think that's what you're bringing to attention. I just wanted to try to clarify that. So, again, purchased the property, there was a slice of land that I didn't know whose it was. And that's what came about for maintenance, I believe it was for a maintenance that they have to create. And in the future, if they need to do maintenance on that piece of property, they have the right to access that. It was a sliver of land, that's what we're talking about. But, and just to come back again, we had filed something and yes, we did not make the meeting. And I was understanding that we didn't make the meeting, so it was just postponed to this evening. And that's the reason why we're here this evening. Again, I apologize if we made the first one. It just, I guess with the rush of the day, we overlooked it. And that's why this evening, John Harden's there to represent us. But again, I'm Edward Flamian, I'm the owner of Nine Ashland. We don't know what we're gonna do with the piece of property, but we just wanted to keep our options open. And that's the reason why we have the application this evening. And thank you.
Glad both you and John are here to answer questions. Thank you. So you own the little slice, which is Lot X, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Do you have other questions, Mary?
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions?
I just have a general question about the layout, but you can roll it down?
Go for it.
I do have a question about when you've taken this parcel out here. You know, the access, the driveway access to the rear of the site is now gone. It's now part of the other parcel, if that's to be sold off and developed. Is, is there gonna be another way, another parking area, another access or drive access?
Yeah, so I think the intention was that this carriage house, which is as old as this house, it's, it's quite nice, would always remain part of this property. So the, and as you may know, there's a new drive put in on this side.
There's a new drive put on the outside?
Correct, on this side of Nine Ashland. Got just some parking back here.
Okay.
So the intent, I believe, because it was all built at one time, it's all of the same character and detail, even though this has not been renovated, it would remain part of this. And in this zone, of course, since this is already a two family, I suppose as an ADU.
Sure.
You could do, you could do that. But in any case, that has not come up as a topic or as an intention of the client. It was always that this would be part of this property.
So the driveway is being conveyed as part of the other property separating out?
Correct. In fact, you know, there might be reason for a small easement back here, that parking were required or something. But that, at the moment, because they really haven't figured out what to do with this property, we haven't gotten that far yet.
That's all.
Yeah, this, at the edge of the new, there is an existing driveway here, which would become a part of this. This driveway here kind of allows that to happen.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we endorse the plan. I don't have any of the information of the plan, but I think you can copy it over. On the condition that a revised application be submitted as soon as possible in accordance with the plan that we're approving, we're endorsing.
Nine Ashland.
Nine Ashland.
Yeah, the plan is Nine Ashland Avenue. Don't see the filing date. Prepared by Moretti and Associates.
March 10.
January 2nd, 2025. I think you filed March 10. Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Same.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sorry about all the confusion.
No, we're sorry that you weren't here the first time, but thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you, Sue. I've actually made a note, Mary, because I agree that the question about an A and R sort of checklist. So we got a complete application before we review it. But let's take that up at the other matters. We'll come back to that. Great, now we're gonna thank you for your patience. Tim, through the continued public hearing for 208 Summer Street by 206 Summer Street LLC, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing, continuing public hearing.
Don't move.
Sue moves. Peter seconds. Roll call, Mary Foley.
Yes.
Peter Morton. Sue Silver. Sarah Craig, yes. Chris Olney.
Yes.
Gordon.
And Laura Tannen.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Tim, you want to bring us up to speed on?
Tom, yeah.
Tom, sorry.
Those are, my name is Tom Sachs. I'm an engineer with Hancock Associates. With me tonight is our project attorney, Joel Fassa. Online, we should have James Emanuel, our landscape architect, and also Tim Curtis, the building architect. And also tonight, the owner, Tim Hopp. So I could share my screen real quick.
Yeah. Did you get that?
Yep. Great. All right, perfect. So last, at our last meeting, we had some comments regarding the erosion control. What steps, measures we take to wrap that up. We also had comments on the landscape plan and we were gonna put together conditions that we were discussing later tonight. So I sent to Mark on Thursday, this is our updated erosion control plan. As you can see in red here, we're proposing straw wattle along the base of the hillside, but any runoff coming down the hill. It's all along the 100-foot buffer. And then for slopes deeper than two to one, we're proposing, you guys, they look like hay bales, but it's gonna be a silt fence. So any slopes greater than the two to one, propose silt fence so the waddles don't fall over. And then lastly, we're proposing a construction entrance at the base of the driveway, just to remove any debris. I believe in your packets, you received a report just on the maintenance during the construction phase. So that'd be any type of maintenance, like reviewing conditions of the system in this, on Summer Street. Also observing the waddles, making sure that those are up to spec. Any questions on this erosion control plan?
Can you just give us the highlight of the four sections in the erosion control plan, or if you don't have it, I can?
I shouldn't have it though.
I can share any more?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, that's all right. So this just breaks up the erosion control and the maintenance into phases. So you have a pre-construction phase, basically issuance of erosion control on these barriers that we were showing on our plan. So basically, the base of the hillside, straw wattle, silt fence, two to one slopes. Pre-construction is just kind of laying everything out before work is done, or in this case, adding more to what after work has been started. For preliminary site work, we're looking at any type of stored materials, seeding, reducing any type of runoff from residual line material on site. If you scroll down. And then the landscaping section is just kind of highlighting disturbed areas, making sure that things are taken care of when you have certain, like storms, any type of critical rainfall. If you scroll down even more. At the bottom, there should be a, so then this is just your construction maintenance phase. You just basically, over the course after any storm or over a period, they'll just inspect the erosion control. The waddles, it's just built up along the sides of the waddles. I think it's about half the waddle that you'd have to attend to it. Vegetated areas, so just inspect anything after major storms. Silk, stockpiles, we covered that, just low and seated areas where you're not gonna be doing any work. So just kind of prevent any type of silt going down the hillside. And then the silt fences are gonna be supporting the straw waddles on the two to one slopes.
Great, any questions?
I have a question, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
Um, yeah, thanks, good. Couple of questions. So has this been, has there been a stormwater permit then formally submitted?
So no, this, so typically, this is a part of the stormwater permit. This is actually section eight of the Mass Stormwater Handbook Standard.
Yeah.
So we are going to be applying for the stormwater permit with the DPW.
Okay.
We're looking for June 1st. I believe that was in our draft of the conditions.
Okay.
So yeah, you know, this will be actually included in that permit, so we'll cover that too.
So my second question was going to be, has the DPW reviewed? But it sounds like you haven't submitted it, so they haven't reviewed yet.
No, we haven't submitted anything with them. Now that we're going to the full extent of the 100-year storm,
Yeah.
we have to look into our drainage options, which we are probably looking to do in another test pit.
Yes.
But right now, we're trying to do site work, so we can't really do the test pit until we get the okay to do site work.
Right, okay.
So, but yeah, no, that will, that will be addressed.
Okay.
And then last, just a clarification, you were saying you will inspect, you will monitor. Who is the you in the, who's monitoring this?
Usually, these are issued to the site contractor. It's basically, you know, it's their discretion if there's a rainfall event. Usually, that's a time, like, oh, we had two inches of rain over the weekend, block the perimeter, observe it. And then if everything checks out, you know, walls are still state, silt fence doesn't have anything built up against it, that's when you can say, all right, we can go back to work. It's something that if, you know, people, if someone comes by, you can't have those erosion control measures amassed, so.
Right.
It's just something that the contractor will have to keep up with.
Yeah, and does that record being get filed with the town or with the DPW or?
I'm not too sure about that.
We've already asked.
What's that?
I mean, if it's requested, you know.
Okay.
It could be something that, yeah, after a rainfall event, you can just check all the boxes and maybe take a picture.
Yeah. Thank you.
So my question is kind of follow on what Laura said. This is a very formal checklist dates. What happened?
Yep.
On what date? Is this what you were just talking about?
Yes, yeah, so it's just basically like an inspection schedule. It's something that, oh, we have rainfall, all right, I'll fill this out, looks good, all right.
Is this something that you do or is it submitted to the?
It's not something that Hancock would do personally, but it's something that's submitted for the contractor to use as a tool that they would keep the record themselves.
You can record for, for who?
Typically, it's the conservation commission. So when they come up, block the sites, they can ask for, oh, for your notice of intent, you guys included this table showing all these inspections of when after storms, have you been keeping up with that? Usually, in larger projects, it's kind of like, it's like a, it's like a residential SWIP, kind of. It's not really a full SWIP, but it's kind of a way of making sure that the maintenance is done.
Well, this will be kept in the, in the construction trailer, assuming they have a trailer time.
Yeah, yeah.
As records to show whoever comes out, that this work has been done.
Exactly, yeah.
I just have one more question, because it doesn't necessarily, I was wondering, with the new grading plan that you guys did a couple of weeks ago, have your numbers changed, your excavation, backfill, aral, numbers have changed?
Not too drastically, no.
So you actually have recalculated based on the new?
No, I've, I've worked with the numbers because we did have some grading in some areas. But where the grading has changed has been kind of more finessing, migrating previously.
No.
So we don't, we didn't see anything too drastic that, it's not like we're gonna be having, you know, less of a cut in certain areas. It's just kind of, kind of be more finessed.
It did seem to, the new grading plan did seem to temper some of the grading that you originally had.
Yeah.
I was wondering if it actually went down.
Yeah.
There were, the numbers you had pretty high.
Yes, yep.
No, no change you have in regurgitating.
I haven't done the full count, no.
Just wondering if it may be worth doing it, just to, for your own satisfaction.
Well, if I may, those numbers also, I think are based on the net sum total, right? And that appears to be a much larger number than the overall disturbance because, you know, you're adding the cut plus the fill.
Exactly, it's not, the net number is different than the totals that we show. The totals that we show is total disturbance. So you have a net here, a cut here, those two together is that, is that total. But when realistically, a cut and fill cancel each other out, that kind of makes sense.
Ideally, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna share two other things that just came up in discussion previously for people who may not have seen it online. This is a, this is a image of the, of the fall, proposed fall protection, that we had asked about that. And then the other thing.
This is the fall protection to be mounted on top of the wall, the retaining wall?
And this is the proposed stone veneer, which I personally think looks a lot nicer than the fall. Other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. So it's in here, if further blasting of ledge is required, where would that be?
So right now, we haven't completed the excavating, so we're not 100% sure, obviously. But I, that location to us is probably gonna be the basement of the house. That's gonna be really the only area that we see that there's gonna be a significant cut in that area. But it's something that's gonna depend on, you know, what we see when we dig. It could be bowlers, it could be, it could be nothing there. So we will take the steps, or our client as well, and take the steps, you know, if we need blasting, we'll apply for it properly.
So I guess my question to the board and the town planner is if, if we're looking at the current state now for the earth removal bylaws, and say you do enough folder moving, blasting, et cetera, that triggers another level of earth removal, how is that ensure that it comes back to the board? Because it seems to be an unknown right now.
Well, I think, if I understand it correctly, they know how much they're gonna remove.
Yes.
It's just, are they gonna be able to dig it with a backhoe? Or are they gonna hit some ledge that they're gonna have to blast some out? And that would require a permit from the fire department. But the actual excavation is still gonna be the same because the house is the same. Already figured out what they, they need to excavate for the basement.
Oh, so like the 3,000, some, some cubic yards, is that, that's gonna be steady? Oh, so like the 3,000 some, some cubic yards is, is that, that's going to be steady?
Yes, that's our proposed grading.
Okay.
So that's, that's our best estimate based on the grading we have in the existing conditions plan.
Okay, so you wouldn't go above and beyond that?
No.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Are we just asking about the stormwater plan now? Is there more coming in the presentation?
The stormwater?
We just talked about stormwater. Are you presenting the revised landscape plans or anything else tonight, or should we ask all the questions now?
Revised landscape plan.
Okay.
I do see James is on the chat. If you'd like to discuss his changes in the um,
Could you just walk us through those?
Go ahead. James, if you want to um, share anything.
Okay, I can now share my screen of the landscape plan. Hold on just a moment. Okay, so um, we have the revised landscape plan. This was done out based on comments and feedback that we had from the last meeting. And the major changes are really having to do with the plant list and plantings themselves. So uh, we listened to your comments and added plants and trees in this area and near, near the drive. And it's going to kind of create a little bit more of a filtered view of the house from some street. So, so now we got trees, not only along property line, but along the inside of the, these will be evergreens as well too, as well as deciduous. And then we get trees on the edge of the existing trees to rename as well here. So, so these two areas are the locations where we've added trees. We also um, put in the plant list together to indicate what the specific trees are going to be. And I know there was a question about that because we had palette before. But just to zoom in, now we've got also fir, white pine, and white spruce as our evergreens. We've got a total of 28 evergreens we're proposing for this project and 10 deciduous trees that were proposed. So 38 new trees to go on site um, as part of the landscape plan. That's really the, the big change. We, we also submitted the uh, the photos that you had shared that uh, show the, the, the stone retain wall, uh, veneer treatment and fall protection, which is kind of a transparent iron fast look, which should just be in this location over here. Um, and the grading is still kind of what it was in previous plan. We saw from grading from the original uh, version that you had before, but I think that we just want to understand that we're looking at pines, spruce, fir, so, so no. I think the cock was, you know, no pointy trees like evergreens and things like that. We don't have that in this plan. We got real um, evergreen trees in the plan where you see this stem without represents either a pine, a spruce or a fir going in place. Oak trees along the sheer and some birch trees uh, in these locations as well too. So those are the highlights of the changes, um, the plant list, the added plants, locations that are in use and accountable and so forth. And I can take in questions if you have any landscape plans we have still up on the screen.
Like his comment, I think the um, the change that we've seen this evolve from the original plan that came in is a definite improvement, significant uh, in the density and quantity of trees planted and the filtering of the views from the public way and from the um, native species planting, more of a New England forest and less of a, you know, a hedge of herbiviti, so. And the grading is much, much better. Again, Tom, no, no disrespect, but the plan has really um, is a much stronger plan, site plan than it was in the beginning. Uh, thanks to you bringing on your associate, your landscape architect. So I, I'm pleased to see the great improvements.
Other comments, questions? All right, any other comments or questions on the, on this application from the board? Um, any comments from the public? Sandy?
Hi, I'm Sandy Rogers, 82 Ole Miss Six Road. This may have been covered in an earlier uh, meeting about the review of the building itself and any aspects such as lighting. Now that the drive has changed, I'm not sure what lighting is going to happen on such a long drive. And being able to keep dark sky within Manchester and especially because it's an exposed hillside, was that covered?
Um, we have talked about having dark sky compliant lighting and like, it, it's proposed in the, our draft conditions. We have it as a draft.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I don't see any online. Um, then I think, go ahead, let me look at.
Yeah, you saw me looking. So I had, I had Shannon fill out the whole package and he sent it to me today like that. Much of the original submission drawing, many of the original submission drawings are still there. Is that correct? Showing the different grading plan, different landscape and different everything. So have the, have these drawings been now part of the application?
Yeah.
A formal part of the application?
Yeah.
And, and the other ones are now deleted or noted as such?
Yeah, so we revised the grading to the latest site plan to uh, show that grading change. And then we'll just, we could basically just note that, the landscape plan for plantings, that's.
Okay, I was going to say, I, I mean, I understand it. I think we all understand it. If you, if you picked up the document from scratch, you would see the old plans and you would be lost as to
Yeah.
which one is relevant, which one is applicable, and which one actually got approved.
The decision will reference the, the revision dates.
Yeah, we have the revision dates on the plan, so just grab that one. It's like March 10th. But not on the landscape though.
Yeah, I, I forgive.
We're using the revision date of March 25th.
Yeah, it's March 21st. I, I, I was always a bug about making sure that the dates on the drawings so someone could follow the, the thread. I just asked you to do the same.
Yeah, no, I'm the same.
Okay, um, Mark, I think what we do is close the public hearing and then discuss potential um, uh, conditions outside of the um, once we close the public hearing, correct?
That's right.
So if we have no other um, comments uh, or questions for the applicant, uh, I'll take a motion to uh, close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all voted in favor. Great, thank you. Um, now Mark has given us a uh, draft um, list of conditions. They will be put into a context that references the hearing, the plans, um, you know, into, into an actual decision. But the um, the proposed conditions are those that we have here. I can put them on the screen if that's helpful. Um, I think the first one is that we just sort of talked about is a revised um, landscape plan.
So I drafted the. Yeah. Okay, that's just the conditions, but I drafted the entire approval.
Oh, is that in there?
Yeah.
I did want to voice my concern of submitting the, an approval document to the applicant before the planning board votes. Mark, in your email today said that's what you usually do. The planning board, in my experience, has never done that. As a planning board member, I find that disconcerting because it's, it's giving the applicant the impression that we are going to vote a certain way. I think that's inappropriate.
I've been doing it for over 20 years like that because oftentimes there's, this is just a single family home on a much more complicated uh, site, a commercial site plan subdivision, oftentimes there's a long list of conditions that um, applicants um, may want to discuss with the board. Um, and they get, and if they come in here totally unprepared for that discussion, then it just continues the meeting another month and then another month and so on and so forth. So uh, this is a way of trying to move things forward, um, complete applications in a timely manner. And there's no downside. I mean, you don't have to vote this if you don't want to. You can still add conditions, modify them. Um, this does not lock anything in.
I'm fine with sending conditions, not a letter that clearly states this is being approved. I, I just, I just find that inappropriate, so I have to voice that.
So it's common courtesy to the applicant, oftentimes in a contentious hearing, perhaps their applicant's attorney is concerned that certain things may not be in a draft approval that I may put together and they may want to ask that certain things be highlighted or included uh, in the discussion that I've been forgotten, so.
Why don't we take that, any other further discussion on that up with the, at the end with um, other process issues? And talk about the, the draft that we have in our file and put it on the screen. So um, for example, uh, the landscape plan dated March 21st.
Yeah, and it'll be as amended.
As amended, so it needs to be um.
With the date, yes, so that'll be added in.
Is that what's the, the correct date, 21st?
Yeah, that was the original date, but um.
Okay, that's it.
Now there's the revision, that's correct.
So that needs to be um. Okay. Mayor, I think you had some questions about those sections. I'm seeing that's. Section of the bylaw?
Oh, so just again, in the past, and, and we used to put it also on the agenda so residents could know that they're applying for 6.4, which, which is an earth removal, but as a board, we're also reviewing 6.3, which is the performance and site plan, and then also 12.5, which is special permit. So all of those um, should be on the agenda when we list it for a public hearing. But then I would think in the first paragraph of the letter that those are the bylaws that we needed to review for this application.
So those are the performance standards that um, the board needs to make a finding that the application is in compliance with, which is at the bottom of page two. But that's not what the application is. The application is for a special permit for earth removal. So that's why it says that at the beginning, and that's what it references. Um, the other things are uh, items that you need to make a finding on and make sure that they comply with the special permit criteria. So that's why um, I have changed how it's still at that. We've been doing it this way for several applications now.
Um, okay, let's uh, talk specifically about the um, conditions. So we find the, the um, proposed language is consistent with 6.4.1 and in accordance with 6.4 and the 12.5 special permit criteria. And then um, board votes to approve with the following conditions, revised landscape plan submitted to the board prior to May 1st. Perhaps we've met that condition at this point with the.
Yeah, I've removed that from
Yeah.
Well, the latest version. That is still there.
So we can reference the photo, um, exterior lighting should be dark sky compliant. This, number four is really the um, sort of outstanding issue, which is an application for a stormwater permit shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works by May 1st. I think the request from the applicant is June 1st. And uh, I think, we'll talk about process later. If it's significant, I'll treat you to the law as required. The applicant should return to the board for a modification of the permit.
I have a question about that one.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, can we make this conditional upon DPW's approval of the stormwater permit?
I think we talked about having the, the building permit conditional.
Building permit conditional, okay. Right, because you need to do site, you're trying to do site work now, so we make the building permit. Okay, can we put that condition in then?
Can we condition a building permit? I think we can condition a permit.
Condition the application for the building permit.
Yeah, I think the site plan, um, is, the site, the special permit is a condition of this building permit, thus the condition of the stormwater would be. They can't get a building permit in this case because of the earth removal till they have a special permit. So presumably they could, we could hold that portion. Um, if blasting, a ledge is required, then a blasting permit should be obtained from fire department. Summer street should be kept free of mud and dirt inside our, state construction hours should comply with the town by law.
Sarah, I had another comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I believe we got in our packet a, a email from the fire department chief.
Yes.
I think that he had reviewed, so I don't know that that's a condition, but it might be a finding in the, in the letter.
I think this is more that blasting, the, the condition is that if there's blasting, the.
Right, right. I wasn't suggesting that we add it as a condition since it's already been met, but that we listed as a finding.
I don't think we, I think.
I have a, I don't know what version you have up there, but I have something here that the um, sound sacks. Uh, the new driveway is designed to comply with the fire department's requirements with great and whips. The fire department responded in the email that the driveway is okay, which we said, okay.
Yeah, exactly, okay, I saw that.
Right, great, thank you. Um, so I think the applicant is asking that we have the stormwater permit by June 1st, given that it's April 15th. I, I think that's reasonable.
What was the, the picture of the fence that's the fall protection? Fall protection? Um, do we need to put that in as a condition that?
Wouldn't we reference it as a plan?
It would be referenced though.
It would be referenced as photos of, I think that's um, retaining walls, so it shall be, shall, it could be um.
Containing wall and fall protection fence.
So Mark, who we referencing? That specific wall? Both, both stone face and.
Yeah.
So I just said. The wall shows a cap on it, yeah. So if we just show the um, precedent photo, I'm sorry.
So I suggested fall protection, that we reference the photo submitted.
Yeah.
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 All right. Um, go ahead.
Uh, so I would expect there to be an affidavit filed at the end of the construction when the civil engineer is certifying that there's conformance for the drawings. I'm just wondering how we're going to get, is that your method to to certify that the stormwater plan has been completed in the planting plans and so forth through those affidavits? And final substantial construction or, yeah.
I'm sorry, if I may, Chair, um, I would imagine that part of this, if I'm being wrong, Mark, the, the building uh, essentially require as-built at the end, and the as-built will show, um, the degree that you want, the stormwater as-built, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Then, you know, I think when necessary, you can go out there, although it may be a little more stuff out there for inspector to go through and say, hey, you know, I can count 26 trees, here they all are, you know, that sort of thing.
Uh, yeah, I would thank you. I think um, it's sufficient, what, I don't know that we, we don't need a peer inspector, this is just a single family house. But if the civil engineering plans and the landscape plans are affidavit with the stamp by the landscape architect and the civil engineer are um.
They need to do that for this for a reservation.
Would you not typically do that? I mean, you're looking for the contractor to certify that it's built according to.
Are you stamping, are you stamping your civil engineering drawings?
We can stamp it in the drawing.
You, are you stamping it?
Oh, I'm not, me personally.
Someone is.
Not you personally, but your firm?
Yes, yeah, all the drawings.
And you've filed affidavit at the end.
Do you have a pre-construction affidavit as well as a post-construction affidavit?
I don't believe.
Normally used on larger projects?
I don't believe we have like, I don't know, but it's, it's, that's more typical for a project where you're more.
Larger projects.
Have something like that.
Right, right.
This is more, the client's going to take this and you can build off of it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And to help him work his way through the permitting process. It's not, it's not really a follow-up at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you're looking, you're suggesting we have assurances that it was done in accordance with.
Yeah, that the 38 trees are planted according to the species and, but you know, whatever is equivalent with the level of the project. I don't think we're asking, we don't want to ask for something that creates extra expense and.
So we can put, we can put down, the planning department shall uh, conduct the final inspection of the site to ensure compliance with the site plan. And keep it simple like that and uh, I've inspected.
I also added a note that we should reference the construction site erosion control plan. So as. So, as-built, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna get rid of as-built, so.
It's hard enough getting as-built on a large project.
Yes, it is.
We always have as-built on there.
I'd be surprised you did on a residential.
Maybe not residential.
You did construction drawings, yeah, as-built are different.
My notes here are rough, rather than, okay. Any other, any other conditions? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the.
Can I, I just have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question on a sentence in the, so the first paragraph on page two, I don't understand the sentence. It says, "This required additional modification of the site, which required they not file for a special permit needed."
Okay.
Double negatives with.
Yeah.
Which, which paragraph, number of paragraphs?
So, you're, so, this one, Thomas Sacks, Hancock, so the last, second to last sentence.
To require additional modification of the site.
It necessitated that they file for a special permit with the planning board, so, which is.
I think we.
No, this is.
It says not, I think you need to take it rid of the not.
Oh, it's already out.
Yeah, I don't see a not in mine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Not.
Sorry, you can remove.
I don't know why we have two versions.
There are, yeah, there are two versions of the file.
Well, I received a few comments in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. All right, great, good catch. I'll take a motion to approve the, the special permit with the conditions described in the draft in the letter, 408 Summer Street.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Close.
All right, thank you, thank you very much for your working with us, and hopefully we look forward to having you.
They need all the luck out of you guys. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
It'll be, yeah, look forward to having you in town, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. So, I asked, we just put the ADU on the agenda, if there are any changes that we want to make based on the, after people have had a chance to think about the input from the public meeting, public hearing, I had, I had one, pull that up, or, did you do any, did you write that up, Mark?
No, wait, all right.
There was one very simple language change that I think was a good suggestion, change the meaning, I think you might have brought that up.
Yeah, I'm looking to.
Yes.
Which change was that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
It's, yeah, it's the additions.
The numbers, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I got it here.
I can hold up for that.
So, on the standard ADUs, it's number seven under the submittal and design requirements.
What's the change?
So, you have, so, number seven, under submittal and design requirements, it says all additions to standard accessory dwelling should be all additions for accessory dwellings, because two's assuming it's already there, four, that's not.
And so, right there, can I tell you something on eight?
Sure.
It says all additions or structures containing a standard accessory dwelling units. I would just do unit.
I'm not sure that's, is that worthy, I think we can.
We can make that.
Make that, it says for a nurse change.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to do one amendment for that.
Something that changes the meaning like this, we need to.
Yeah, I'll put that up on the screen in case. This is actually right from the warrant, so I can't mark this up, it's right where my cursor is, all additions for, and this is in both the standard and the large. So, I'm going to take a motion to make that change, we can make that from the floor as part of the main motion.
In the large, it's a, it's number eight in the large.
So, it's a number seven in the standard and number eight in the, to change two to four. Go ahead, Laura.
Would it be even clearer to just strike all additions two? Because four or two.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's probably a good suggestion.
Then you would just say standard accessory dwelling units shall comply.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Okay.
And I think that is much clearer.
Yeah.
Yes, great.
Four or two's a little unclear.
Yeah.
Same thing in the other section, right?
Okay, so I'm going to take a motion to strike all additions two in number seven of standard and number eight of the large, to clarify the meaning. So, let's just make sure it's eight in the large. Sandy was giving me a.
I think it's seven also.
It's seven as well.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's seven as well. Okay. So, that's the standard, it's seven.
Oh, yes.
All additions two, yeah, thank you, Laura. Okay, do I have a motion? Tell move second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Any other changes that we need to contemplate?
I have one, which is number nine of the same design standards, and rather than saying you have to utilize an existing driveway entrance, it may be that somebody might want to move their driveway, so I think it should simply say that there be, shall be a single driveway entrance, and not restricted to the existing.
The property already has two.
And also, the, I think that the language there gets, I think we're, what we're saying is that the dwelling unit and the primary shall use the same.
As in a shared.
Shared driveway.
A shared driveway.
Oh, so we could say that instead of the existing.
Shared.
Shared.
And it doesn't comment on whether it's in, right, same place now or later.
Well, I think, I think they, for the purposes of taking the permit, they would use this, and then they would subsequently file with the, with the Public Works Department for a new driveway permit, and which would be allowed, provided it meets the standards and they close up the old one, that was the thing.
I'm not sure it's worth confusing the meaning.
Do you want to just say, shall utilize primary driveway entrance?
We don't define that anywhere, though.
That sounds like you might do.
I would make, I would strongly suggest that we not try to muck with that on the town meeting floor, and that people can, we can.
There's a variety of people now beginning to come forward with ideas, changes, and this and that.
Which are off on.
What I've tried to discuss with them is, let's try and get this passed without changes, and then we can get a little group together, the work of the planning board, together a list for a year from now to modify this, but I think in order to get this passed, keep it, yes, there's some things that are restated, there are some things that could be tweaked in wording, but I think the intent is clear of what being required.
I mentioned at the beginning that we do, that I received a correspondence, and it went, didn't go to the full board, but from Gary Gilbert, and then he copied Axel Maggson and Chuck Wisner, who all sort of chimed in, that they thought it was a good idea, and he simply echoed the comments he made at the public hearing, which is to not reiterate the requirements that we meet other zoning and historic and watershed, so I think we've already discussed that unless somebody, but he did, again, make that case. Okay, any other changes that?
I have a question, so, on number two, how come we never added, so it says exterior elevation shall be submitted for any application required in addition to any building or habitable space. Why didn't we include for and detached?
It says and/or new structure. I'm looking at the warrant right now, right there, or a new structure, we did get it in there.
What number?
Oh, number two, yeah, okay.
I'm just pulling what was in the meeting pack.
Okay, sorry, this is what's in the warrant, because we did, we made that change.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine, this, this is, this is the warrant from the, from the website, from the towns, this is the town meeting warrant.
Okay, I'm just going with our meeting pack.
It's fine.
Yes, I know this isn't a public hearing, so thank you for taking this. I actually looked up on the mapc.org site, the definition of accessory dwelling units, are small homes inside or attached to a single-family home or in a detached structure. I know that this has gone back and forth about allowing more than one ADU because you've split the small and the large, so I highly recommend that that be eliminated and that it focus on single-family.
So, MAPC is not, we're, it's EOHLC that we need to go by, not MAPC, so that may be an older definition, I don't know, I haven't seen that, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we, I was thinking through this large, so large, large up to 1,200 per feet can be allowed, are allowed by special permit, and one per lot, one large per lot. It seems to me that a reasonable provision in that special permit condition would be to restrict, could be, if you have a, it would be up to the ZDA, to restrict the ability to have future ADUs there, because, because you're getting it through a, through a special permit, so it's a little bit unclear. I think that there will have to be, but the, as far as we know, the, we, the definition for the ADU in single-family districts is what is in the regulations. I don't disagree with you.
I've been digging, looking at all these, you know.
I mean, I agree with you that it, it, personally, I agree with you that it, that it's about single-family homes, but that is not how the regulations for the standard or protected use are written.
So, you're saying we should do that for the large?
For the large.
I think that it should be that.
The large says that.
Well, it says, it says.
It doesn't say just for single-family.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Where does it say?
Number two.
Number two and number three.
Number two.
Use requirement. Large accessory dwelling units are only permitted on a lot containing a single-family home.
And then it says, large accessory dwelling units are not permitted on a lot which another accessory dwelling unit already exists, so if you already have a small one, you can't have a large.
Was that added?
No, those are in our.
Here's the requirements, this is a 9.1, we need one large, can you see that? I can make a little bit, like, 175.
Sarah, so are we adding wording that if you have a large already, it would preclude the small?
We can't, we don't think we can add that on the, in this bylaw, but it could potentially be a condition of a special permit.
I was looking at that today, and right now, the guidance, though, is that if you have a large, you are entitled to a small.
You're monitoring totally.
That, that's what the guidance is in EOHLC on their website, but it's not contained in the language of the regulation, so, I mean, the law's too new, but I don't think we can definitively say if someone asks that question, that, oh, no, definitely not, I don't think we can answer that. And I would like to ask the board, why are we putting forth a large ADU at all? If, so, one, we want ADUs to be small and accessory, right? So, why are we saying, why are we doing another layer when we don't need to?
Because this would be the case, you had a small ADU, you could probably, under the state guidance, put another smaller ADU, whether it's large or not, isn't the issue?
A second small is a special permit. It's in the regulations.
So, my question is, why, but, but we're getting ourselves into a pickle in town, because if somebody wants two ADUs, they can first just apply for a large and then do a small by right, so now they've got three.
They're not guaranteed a large.
They're not.
Right, so, why are we doing, so, here's my answer, this is just, and that is, we have been, since I have been on the board and before, we have been hashing around ADUs and struggling to figure out how to address the, fix the employee piece, fix the double lot piece in something that's reasonable, and we've had many people come here and tell us the town wants the ability to have ADUs everywhere, or the town wants no ADUs, or whatever, and so we're going to put this before the town meeting and find out what the voters think about a large ADU. That's my view, is that we actually don't know what everyone thinks, and let's give the town the opportunity to think it through and make a vote, and whether they make a vote, whether the town meeting votes for it or against it, will be interesting, and then we will actually know how people feel.
I, I agree with that, and I think during the most recent hearing we had, I mean, there were more people pressing us to go larger, to not have a rental limitation, there were more people who were arguing, yeah, have them everywhere, that, you know, it was discriminatory, some of our rules, so, there were, we have heard from a lot of people who want these, we've also heard from a lot of people who don't want any of this, so, as Sarah said, I think it's our responsibility, representing the entire town as a planning board, to put something forward that we think is what people are asking for, and we'll see if it is or not.
Laura? Can I, can I add to that, too? Because I was originally against the large size, and there was a point when we were talking about a 2,000 square foot large ADU, for my scratchy voice, it's allergy season. But, and I came around to it when we reduced the number, because I thought, you know, for me, a 2,000 square foot house felt like another house, so, when I came around, it was the discussions that we had, and we heard some with the public, it wasn't a black or white thing, like, you know, we want them all or we don't want any, it was more like, we have a lot of existing structures in town, our garage, our carriage house, or, you know, with our older historic fabric, we have a lot of buildings that are not, they're going to be a little too large for an ADU, and that's not going to give, the standard will not give you the flexibility to use that for, you know, an in-law apartment or whatever it might be, but if we give a little more room and a special permit process, then we might actually preserve some of those buildings and, and allow people to use their properties and their outbuildings in a way that does accommodate more housing, and I, I thought that was pretty compelling, so long as we limited it to what seemed to me like a reasonable size with 1,200 and not going, you know, bigger than that, and any number you pick is arbitrary, right, 1,200, 1,500, 2,000, we argued them all, but I felt like that the 1,200 to 900 range was like, definitely small and a little bit bigger, but let's see if that gives people the flexibility they're talking about, so I, I felt like it was more of a spectrum of uses rather than like all or nothing on the large.
Okay, and we have voted to, to recommend them to town meeting at this point. Okay, and we have voted to, to recommend them to town meeting at this point. So let's, um, any other change, potential proposed changes for this? Okay.
And did, was it discussed why we didn't do the elevation as an accessory structure?
That is in a large too.
It's in the large?
Number seven, they're large accessory dwelling should remain accessory and not be.
We're talking about elevation drawings.
Uh, we said the large, uh, if it's proposed an accessory structure after this town meeting, the structure must comply with the primary dwelling setbacks. I guess we didn't, um, we don't have the height.
So we have accessory structure bylaw that limits the height to one and a half stories or 25 feet, so that it's not a 35-foot high, you know, like a house. I just thought that that made sense to kind of, if they want to fit into neighborhoods and things like that. So I thought we were putting a limit on the height for the.
I think that would limit people adding on to an existing house that was 35 feet high.
Well, I think it's, number seven, I think you could argue, if I was to, if I was granting a special permit, which is all, um.
Dimensional requirements.
Dimensional requirements. It says additions, but we don't, it's a special permit. So comply with lot coverage requirements, primary building setbacks, and dimensional requirements. So dimensional requirements, and that says additions, but, you know, if you have an accessory structure and you're, this is by special permit, don't forget. So I think a ZBA could certainly, um, look at the, the lot and make that determination.
Right, but if an applicant, if it's not in the bylaw, the applicant will say it's not in the bylaw, and they would have to grant it. So this is the time to put those types of things in your bylaw. And, and why, I'm sorry, why is, um, why are these large not in G?
We made a decision, I think at your recommendation, we said not in D and in G, because the, for a couple of reasons. One is the downtown is already quite dense, the G is already quite dense, and D, you already can have a single, two family. And our existing ADU 9.1 doesn't have them in D or G, so we were trying to sort of keep that same number. So, um, I guess Mary's making a suggestion that we, um, modify this to require accessory structures, maintain accessory height. I'm going to suggest that we allow the ZBA to, to make that determination.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I remember we had some conversation about this at a meeting, we got some feedback from architects.
Again, I, this isn't perfect, but I think it's a good step in the, um, I think it will fall or pass based on the larger context rather than the details, those kinds of details. And I think it's worth considering that in the future as a, as potential improvement. Does, does anybody want to answer that? Okay. So I, I think that closes that out. Thank you for, um, so the next thing is the discussion of the visioning project for downtown Manchester and the one-stop application, or if you want to speak to those, we have a, um, letter, you know, packets from Kathy McCabe.
Kathy McCabe, yes.
And as I said, Mark and I met with her, and, uh, Mark, why don't you go ahead and?
So, um, so this is, uh, this kind of stems, uh, a little bit from a follow-up on IMETA discussions last spring when we were putting the bylaw together. And those initial proposal included a large portion of the general district, and we kind of eventually steered districts out of here, but we had a large discussion about, um, you know, the downtown and what it should look like, and, um, you know, what, what we want to see in the future for business development, for residential development, how do we address many, many issues related to that. So, um, the downtown committee, so besides attending your meetings, other, one of the other boards I attend is the downtown improvement committee meetings. And, um, so they've been discussing the downtown and, and a variety of more specific elements. So again, it kind of came up a little bit in listening to, to their meetings, you know, and, and, you know, we've been here a little more than a year. There's also, you know, I hear lots of different things from people about what they want downtown to see. And I don't know if there's ever really been a true visioning session program for the town to, to figure out what we want. I always hear people say we ought to fill our storefronts, have a few more people, maybe some activity, you know, other types of things. But again, until we do a, a true visioning session, including a survey and some public sessions in front of some boards and get feedback from other boards, um, you know, I, I, and, and so this, my vision would be the first step in doing an overall bigger planning study for the entire general district. So, um, this, um, so I reached out to a planner I know who's done some of this work, and she insisted on coming up, and we walked around, and she submitted this proposal based on our discussion, so.
So this proposal really is a first step of sort of a working session with the planning board to first scope out, to, to, to scope out the work plan for this work, you know, do we, which do we want to do first? How far do we want to go? Do we, um, you know, what are our priorities? And, um, and then a subsequent work, uh, proposal would come in for the, if we wanted to, it's, I thought it was a good way to test her out, help her, help, have her help us, um, think through some things. I personally thought she had some really good ideas and some very specific experience around how to craft a visioning session. So I see, I envision this as a working session with the planning board. Obviously, it would be an open meeting, but it would, I mean, a public meeting, but I see it as real kind of a working session with, with us. And maybe she can, will have some ideas about how to take public comment in that, that meeting and so forth, but let her lead it, and she set a two-hour dedicated meeting that we would do. And my proposal, my suggestion is that we would target this for the first meeting with our new board. It sort of makes sense, and, and certainly, um, might be useful to have you guys come to that, to, to listen, or see if it is appropriate, but let Kathy kind of guide us on how to do that. She's done a lot of these. So the, um, proposal before us tonight is, we do have, still have 25,000 in this, this year's, um, budget, so proposals for $7,000. And I'd like to see us authorize Mark to enter into a contract for scope of services provided by McCabe Enterprises for a, um, a visioning session and workshop with the planning board, start working at our downtown.
I like the idea because I think we did have a lot of feedback that people are concerned about the downtown, and they don't want it all to be turned into residential, or concerned about having, you know, vibrant businesses. My only concern is to make this limited as we begin. I don't, I mean, I just, I don't want to see a long drawn-out, very large process, um, with another year going by without us thinking about specific zoning changes that will help the issues that people are bringing to our attention regarding downtown. So my only request would be, I like the idea of hearing from her and hearing what her suggestions are. We could sort of take it a step at a time.
I think her proposal is to make a work plan. So I think the planning board will guide that work plan. That's the way I see it, is what do we see as the first step, the most important steps? And how does this potentially, um, become part of, I mean, one other way the work plan might flow is that it becomes a part of the master plan, is that this, that that larger work is part of the master plan, potentially? Or, um, and I know that there's the one-stop.
So I, I envision this as kind of being a, like precursor, a little, um, taste of what, what we can do, what people think for the downtown while we apply for a one-stop grant. And, uh, they have a small town in Roosevelt and program, or small town planning grant, which we would apply for to do a master plan for the entire general district to really look at, because our general district is more than just, so we would look at the general district from a zoning perspective and the downtown specifically, uh, and as well as we would look at streetscape design for the downtown. The DIP committee has, um, has a streetscape, which phase one was constructed like 15 years ago, maybe more. Uh, they have plans for phase two.
Kind of.
Yeah, but it's, um, you know, it could be reworked a little bit. There's some very good things about phase one and some things that probably should be reworked into phase two as well. So, so looking at the streetscape, looking at, um, uh, you know, parking, street design, that all kind of fits together as well as looking at zoning. And so, um, we envision, we would try and get an application into the one-stop, and so this would kind of give us a preliminary kind of step into that.
When is the one-stop grant, when on the one-stop?
They're due sometime in June, you know, the exact date is.
So having a workshop in May helps us to, to prioritize the scope of work for a, for a grant application.
So I agree with Sue, that we can't ignore short-term things after we're done. My other hope is that there are a lot of stakeholders to downtown, and I think the planning board is the logical place to do this, but we have to make sure that we incorporate, uh, the DIP and the property owners and the residents in the downtown and the chamber of commerce. They all have a role to play in this.
And the business owners as well.
Of course, that's the, yeah. So this has got to be a, uh, a wide net that we're going to cast here right away.
So thereby the challenge, though, how do you, I like the effort, I've always liked this kind of effort, the brainstorming, thinking about it, but it tends, when you expand the range, it gets a bit diluted and the message starts to go all over the place, different what you intended. So it, that's something we have to be aware, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, because I do think we should do it, but beware that that, that's a good chance that that will happen.
Laura, um, if you're doing a visioning study with a fairly narrow budget and timeline, and then you're doing one-stop, which maybe is more technical, I would advocate for making the vision study about thinking about what's, what makes a vibrant downtown, what do we want to see? Not about problem solving in a technical sense, and definitely not about parking, because I think you need to remember that you've just done a parking study, we have that information, we're not going back to argue that one way or the other. Really, there are so many more things to talk about downtown than parking and whether you should be able to park outside a store. So I would just, and I know, like, I'm not going to be here when this happens, but I'll be there in the public, but.
We'll channel you.
I'll be out there and say, but I think this is an opportunity, especially if it's kind of short and condensed, like, what do we want to see? Let's do some real visioning here, let's vibrant, and that, it's not just fixing problems. And so we can come back and talk about parking in part two, but don't think about parking. Make it about something figuring out.
I guarantee parking will become, having been in all these downtown improvements.
I know, I think you just need to set that right at the beginning.
Parking and restrooms are basically all we talk about.
So I think the other question for me is what's actionable? And, um.
What do you mean what's actionable?
Actionable, meaning, you know, we don't, this is, the one-stop is a planning grant, it doesn't come with a $10 million implementation grant.
Oh, yeah.
And so actionable to me are things that, um, can happen in the near term. And I know, Mark, you're very interested in the whole general district, but I'm, I think we're hearing that most, that the downtown center is the main, uh, concern, and there are pressures, there's significant pressures for change that our current zoning could allow unintended consequences, or my opinion.
Unintended negative consequences.
Unintended, uh, unwelcome unintended, um, outcomes. And so how do we get consensus around, and we are never going to improve, we are going to, you know, please everyone. But one of the things in speaking with Kathy I thought was very helpful is I said, you know, people want a vibrant downtown and they don't want more traffic. And she said, absolutely. But what you do is you craft questions that recognize the complexity of a problem when you give people options, so that, that they understand that a vibrant downtown may come with, uh, more people in the downtown, particularly at, you know, beach days or whatever it is, you know, however you frame the, the complexity of the issue. And, and she got that immediately, as opposed to saying, do you want more, do you want vibrant shops downtown? No, yes. But, you know.
It's the people of the parking in a way, though.
So, yeah.
So I'm not all that familiar with the master plan, but from what I do understand, it did cover some of this, how to make downtown more vibrant, right? So is, is the master plan still an actionable document? Is it one that we reference? And how would a study like this influence that?
I think we, one of the homework assignments would be to review the master plan, at least think about it. But it is, hasn't, again, my opinion is that it has, you know, it's almost 10 years old, I guess, 2019, but it, you know, many of the issues remain, but we've also accomplished a number of, many of the things that were in the master plan too.
And that probably would make sense then, as a homework assignment.
Yeah.
So we could come to that discussion.
Absolutely.
With an, an idea as to what it is that we want to address, that has already, we know has residents' interest, and we can just layer this and maybe dig in a little with this.
But I think having some professional help from outside of town, who's sort of a seasoned thought leader on this, and then it will also tell us whether, um, she's a good person to work with in the future, or whether, you know, we're fairly short money, we can say, I mean, this is going to build, right? If, if after an hour we all think this is nuts, we can cut it off right then too. It's, so I.
So can, and, and that, a related question, with a, a number of new members coming in to the board, are we going to think about, I mean, like, do we have goals for the upcoming year? I know we talked about it, but I don't really remember identifying any. It might be a good time to revisit that and see if we can do that as new voices are coming in, so that we can.
I agree.
Have a, have a game plan.
Yeah. I also would like to see if we can get some training.
Yeah, I'm up for that.
So I have, um, I need to step back for a minute and then some questions. Um, so as I recall, the last time we talked about this was part of what zoning we want to bring up to town meeting, and then it stopped. So where did it go from that to engaging with a consultant and getting this report? I missed that meeting.
I think Mark suggests, this is Mark's professional recommendation, that we engage somebody, I think it's a good, um, I, I thought it was a good idea to bring forward. If we don't want to do it, then we can vote no tonight.
But I guess I, my point being, and for members that come on, these types of decisions used to be board decisions, and it seems more and more things are happening outside of the meetings, things are being decided, and then it's. Things are being decided and then it's brought to the meeting. So that has been an ongoing concern of mine. And it sounded like you knew this person, so you called her up. And it's just not really how it's supposed to work with getting consultants in for a planning board meeting.
What's the harm in that though?
Yeah, I mean, there are a number of other consultants we can call. We can get other proposals. I mean, this is, but this is somebody I knew who, and, you know, we chatted with. And I believe I've worked with her before, so.
I also don't think this is happening outside of the meeting. We haven't spent a nickel. And I, we mentioned it at the la, at the last meeting, that we were going to be taught, having this conversation. So.
I'm just saying, as a board member, I don't remember that. And if the question is what's the harm? The harm is, is that we're not following process. And we're all equal board members and we should all be able to have equal access to information of what's going on. It might not bother some people. It's bothered me the whole time I've been on the board. So I'm, I'm bringing that up. I guess the other thing I would say is with something like this that looks to be, that it's going to kind of be a zoning bylaw change to protect businesses downtown. We've had a wayfinding grant. We've had parking studies. We've had, we have downtown improvement. We have a town, an employed town planner. I'm not sure why we need this other layer to do the first step of brainstorming of what should happen downtown. I think we have all this expertise, some that the town pays for, some that's volunteer. And then we're going to put another layer on it. I just, I, I think this is why we have a planning board, for the planning board to do such studies.
Well, I appreciate your perspective, but I also appreciate Mark sort of taking the initiative to get this moving. Because it seems like we've, we constantly just have these things thrown at us and we have to react. But every time there's a change in state law, and it seems to me here's a chance to get ahead of this a little bit. I think Mark's idea of bringing in an independent person is actually, could be helpful. So I appreciate the fact that you came forward with the plan. And it doesn't bother me that Mark did this with a chair. I think that is the job of a chair, is to be working with the planner behind the scenes and working through various things, you know? Things like putting the agenda together, just everything. So that doesn't bother me. But I, I do understand your perspective. Just have a different one.
Okay, any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion to ask Mark to enter into a short-term contract with McCabe?
So can, I'm sorry, before we do that, just let me ask about the timing again of that? So the one-goal grant is due in June, early June?
One-stop.
One-stop, I'm sorry, one-stop, end of June?
I believe it's, I believe it's like the middle of June.
And we intend to use whatever findings we get from this consultant as content for that?
Yeah, it would be considered.
No, that's great. I'm just asking, I think that's great. I mean, I just, the reason why I'm asking is, does that timeline allow for us to get back from?
And like as Sarah had mentioned, there may be a variety of actionable items that will come out of this that we may not want to wait until the complete one-stop. We're in the whole one-stop planning process. Because that won't happen until, if we, if we get funded, first off, it's a grant application. So we may not get funded. But if we do get funded, we wouldn't be starting really until January of next year. You would enter into contracts in December and start working probably January. So it's a, it's a longer-term process, but it's also a big study. It's, it's looking at like, again, I said, streetscapes at the overall general district, a variety of things. So, so there may be some items that might be identified here that we can work on in the interim. Whether, whether they're like public improvements to a park or, you know, parking or whether it's, you know, a zoning changes or other types of things that come out of this. We might find everybody in town, 90% of the people want the zoning to change to allow something that we currently don't allow. And if we find that out, then there's no harm in bringing that forward in the interim.
So what might be really helpful is for the next meeting, if you can put together just kind of an outline of the background on the one-stop program that you were going to apply for, and then just an outline of the goals. I do think that there's, we may have a little tension on how broad that, that study should be or whether we should be more focused and whether we should do. So let's, let's, why don't you put together your vision in an outline form? Not, so that we can then have that, to Mary's point, have the discussion about what we're going to do. Because even if we get a fully funded study, it takes a lot of our time and your time and downtown improvements, everybody's time. And we want to make sure that it's going to get the outcome that we want, that we agree on.
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you. Would anybody? Yeah, go ahead.
So in the meantime, you said a number of times that there's some pretty fast-moving things that are happening downtown that may impact downtown. So I just want to make sure we don't take our eye off of that.
That's partly why I really want to have somebody come.
So then we should work that into that discussion too.
Think this through, yeah. Somebody who's had, has some, she's working across lots of communities too. So it's a great way to bring in current knowledge of other Massachusetts. She works largely in Massachusetts. So she knows the ins and outs of ADUs and commercial. And she had some, she had some really good observations.
Right.
So for one example, she said when Stiles, we walked around, Stiles Scoops was, Stile?
Scoop.
Is next to Mari and is next to Stock. She says, she said, by that moving there, you now create kind of a retail clothing logical.
Like the auto mile.
It so happens. And she said that, you know, go ahead.
It's like the auto mile.
Right, yeah.
The auto 100 feet.
And then, you know, there's really kind of a couple of chunks of the downtown. And the harbor point to me is like a very vulnerable, or, you know, what?
Potential.
There's a lot, what?
Lot of potential.
Lot of potential for change. What change do we want there? And yet, they own parking. And so could, you know, on one side of it, do they, does that property create opportunity for, for commercial vibrance that then affects the whole town? Or is it, you know, should it be housing? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying it should, I'm just saying, should it be a parking garage? I mean, whatever, you know?
And I think, I think this study will help.
Yeah.
Let's focus.
It's also in the flood zone, so we also have the flooding issues. Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion to ask Mark to?
I'll make that motion.
To enter into a contract with McCabe Enterprises for a limited study as proposed for approximately just under $8,000.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy, I was going to say $8,000. Up to $8,000.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Nine.
Opposed? Abstained? Abstained, one abstention, thank you. One thing, Mark, we have not had a contract with any consultants since you've been here, I don't think. And we should get clear, we don't have to do it right now. But when we had, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but let's, when we get this, about who approves the bills for the, the work, the scope of work, is it done? I think we ran into problems with the Mark Bobrowski contract where the scope was paid out but not completed. And so we really want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Well, they're supposed to come to the planning.
Yeah, it needs, so, let's, let's keep our eye on that ball. Okay, thank you. I mentioned correspondence already. We have minutes of March 12th.
I wasn't here.
Who was? Mary was not here. Okay.
Should I move that be approved?
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, not Mary or Sue? Okay, members present, we're missing Peter on that list. I believe Peter was on.
Were you on Zoom that meeting?
On March 12th.
Yeah, that's the night you were in the ER.
It was the zoning forum?
The Zoom only. Yes, you were on, you were in the ER.
Oh, I was on there then.
Yes, you were there. So Peter Morton was on.
Oh, sorry.
So that should be changed. Okay, great, thank you. Any public comment? Sandy?
Hi, I've got two.
Okay, let's listen.
Okay, one, I want to reiterate what Sarah just said about this contract that you're going into, being that all monies are coming from sort of town, ultimately the citizens, that there should be more clarity in the outcome of what you're expecting. And that was not really clear to me. And there were lots of, there was a two-hour session or then there was a whole like plan potentially coming from it. So my advice is that there needs to be clarity at that, what the deliverables you want. Just like any, I'm a consultant, so make that very crystal clear. The expectation, the scope, even like sort of the scope of that deliverable, not just that it's going to be a plan. A plan could be two paragraphs, so.
So the proposal does have five points.
Okay, okay. The main thing I wanted to bring up is I tried to look up the floodplain map to go with the floodplain article. In the article, it says dated July 8th, 2025, which is a future date.
That's the, those are the dates that the state has asked us to use.
So.
I know it's.
That's presuming that that's approved. And then it just may have been when I looked, but FEMA started pulling maps off the website because of what's going on nationally. So there, to me, I saw, I only saw a map that was delayed, that was dated in July, not this exact date of July of 2023. So I think, Chris, you were talking about showing a map.
Yeah.
I couldn't find a 2025 map.
Okay, could you just check with Eric on that?
So the maps are filed, the maps are filed with the town clerk, the 2025 maps. They are filed with the town clerk, they're on the town planning board website as well. Yeah. And they are, were sent to us from FEMA. So they are the FEMA-approved maps that we are to use. So I don't know what else to say, but this.
Maybe you can just up confirm with them. Because I think that is a question that we are going to get. And if the, here's the, the link, National Floodplain Layer. So if you can just check with Eric and see if they have been, if they have been changed.
If we can print them and have them at town meetings, so people can.
Yeah, we're going to put them on a board.
Yeah, I think it might be out for comment. So what's there might change. And in the future, just something to consider is that if an updated map becomes approved, are you going to have to always update this article? Or maybe within the article in the future, add something, or within the bylaw in the future, add something about maintaining updates?
Yeah, so if, if.
With approved FEMA maps.
So from a zoning perspective, if a map needs, is updated regardless of what time map it is, that reflects, that refers to a zoning thing, it needs to get readopted by town meeting. So whether it's a floodplain map or we change some overlay district for something else, somewhere else. So it does need to go back to town meeting. I believe I received a letter recently from FEMA that says there were no changes to Manchester's maps, but they issued new maps with new dates. And so.
We should probably just make sure that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I will make sure.
Yeah. Okay, any other comment? Anybody else online comment? Okay, other matters, we just, just to circle back to earlier in the meeting, Mark's going to look at the A and R application and get them back to us with an updated A and R application. So I think Mary's correct, it hasn't been updated in a long time. And I know I talked with Shannon about, he's put a A and R checklist when an A and R comes in. But can we make sure that they're, is there a way that we can get to that before the town clerk stamps it? So to make sure it's, it's complete. Because if the town clerk stamps something and it's incomplete or the, then we're kind of stuck. So.
It's ticking.
Yeah, the talk is ticking. So can we ask, is there a process by which we can ask that we sit, that you see it before and, and go through the checklist that I know is now in each file?
I'll find out.
Let's find out.
I'll find out that.
Or that we can give her that checklist at least, when she's going to, she's not able really to look through those.
Yeah, in most other communities, well, in the other communities I've worked in, we never had a checklist. And you look at the plans to make sure they're sufficient for the, for A and R purposes. So.
But if on A and R.
Primarily what I look at is the plan to see whether it's entitled to endorsement or not, so.
But have they paid the fee?
Yes, right.
Is the, you know, and even the plan. So often we do get a plan that doesn't, that needs changes.
It's the process, not the subs.
Right.
Okay.
So if we can check with them.
I will.
Well, one of those four things has to be checked.
In the application.
In the application.
Yeah.
But.
So we can know what basis we are.
But we probably have to add number five. And I think the, three years ago, we were going to review all of the applications and take them out of the subdivision control laws. Because that's not a good place for them. But they all kind of need review and update because they're all very.
Let's start with the A and R plans. Great, okay, any other comment, any other business? Great, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait.
Oh.
We did skip over that we're having a public forum on Thursday night.
Right, right.
And meant to be informal. And so that people have a chance to have more informal discussions about what will be on the warrant from the planning board.
And it's posted on Zoom as well as, and we'll be here?
Yes.
At 6:30. Mm-hmm. Great, thank you, Sue. And anybody, hopefully all of us can come. The other thing is the next upcoming meetings is the public forum, town meeting. We are going to post for 5:30 because we've learned our lesson that every once in a while, something comes out of the blue. And if we haven't posted, we can't address it. And then our next meeting after that is May 12th. So we will miss Laura at that. Mary will still be here, that will be good. And, okay, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Laura. Thank you, thank you all.